Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. We're going to very briefly start with having our wonderful guests introduce themselves of the panel. We're on the panel, so should we start? Alright. My name is Alex Iskaha Heis. I'm the Senior Student Representative on the School District School Board.
Yeah, and my name's Arnell Husreifovich. I'm also a student rep on the school board. And we can go down the line here.
Good evening. My name is Rob Evans, and I'm Vermont's School Safety Leader as an Officer for the Agency of Education and Department of Public Safety.
And I'm Trevor Whipple, your Chief of Police.
Hi, Elizabeth Fitzgerald, Chair of the School Board.
Kevin Guerillas. I'm a School Resource Officer in the Youth Services Division.
I'm Dennis Ward. I'm the Supervisor in Charge of the Youth Services.
I'm David Young. I'm the Superintendent of Schools here in South Burlington.
Alright, so thank you so much for coming to the South Burlington School District Safety Summit. I'm going to quickly read our three main purposes for this evening. First, it is to inform the community about our safety protocols and our continued work to improve school and community safety. Second is to identify the concerns the community may have around safety and security. And lastly, to generate ideas about how the community can play a role in making our school and community safe.
So we're really excited about this event tonight. We'll start off with a few presentations here. Three different presentations, then we're gonna get into small table discussions where hopefully we can mix and match some people and we'll talk about community concerns, discuss some of these questions that are on the table, write some notes, and get feedback. And we'll follow that up by having a few questions being asked to the panel, and hopefully those being answered to the best of our abilities. And then we'll wrap it up with hopefully getting some final feedback online. So with that all being said, I think we can get started with the first presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I'm Arnell, and welcome, everybody. Yeah, my name's Dave Young. And a couple of quick things. We do have R E T N here, and appreciate them being here. They're recording, and we'll share it with the rest of our community. So I have just a few short things. Most of the conversation, as Alex and Arnell said, is gonna be in your table group conversations, but it's right for us to give you a little bit of an overview of safety and security in South Burlington, and likely similar in all Vermont schools around. So I wanna just quickly go through some of this information with you. So obviously, our first priority, before we can get to education, we need to make sure that people feel safe. So a big part of what we do is making sure people feel safe. It's the number one priority in our district to ensure that both our students, our staff, our community members when in the building feel safe. There's a few, what I would say, notable items of safety and security. Again, we don't go into a lot of detail here, but just some significant points. When we talk about single point of entry, we have changed this over time, but our main entrances now are really our single point of entry. If you've come in or tried to come in, you know, through the side doors of the high school, that's not gonna work anymore because those doors are shut. And that's similar in all of our schools also, although the elementary schools really have single point of entry just off of the parking lots, but that's certainly there. Our access control, a lot of you, if you've come, you have to put on visitor badges. You have to be entered into the schools. Certainly, that's apparent, and if you're around a staff member, you see a lot of us carrying these. These are also our access keypad that get us into the doors that we need to on our access. Building room keys and what we call intruder lock sets. So intruder lock sets are, again, if you're a community member and you're in our facility and you need to lock the door, similar to what happens in a bathroom, there's push buttons from the inside. And that's been a change for us over the years as well, so those intruder locks are there. Cameras inside and out, that's something that's happened over the last probably fifteen years. And again, thanks to the voters of South Burlington, we now, we're gonna upgrade those cameras that are close to twenty years old. They're putting new ones in. And then lighting, as you leave tonight, although I'm not sure it will be that dark, but you'll see a pretty significant lighting increase. We've increased the lighting and actually lowered the electricity through LEDs, but we've increased that as well. And then we're happy, as you've heard, our School Resource Officers, our South Burlington Police Officers through the Youth Division, and we are really fortunate that we have three, and we'll probably have four sometime in the near future. But we're really, really fortunate to have them in our schools. Obviously, the purpose of our emergency work is to, and we work in cooperation with the city. We have developed plans. Our plans provide fast and consistent references to making sure we respond appropriately. And we also, the last point here is that we have what we call Safe Schools. This is an online system that allows our staff to sign on and get training. And so we have a fair amount of training there that's available for preparedness and first aid type things. Our crisis teams, we have a Public Safety Committee that comes together once a year. In addition, every school has a crisis team. We try, again, the crisis teams may convene frequently, depends on what the needs are. Generally, as a district, we do sit in on some of those meetings, and a series of tabletop exercises are also done on a regular basis as well. The very last point here is there's an audit that we do. And so this is, again, part of the safeties team is to be looking at things that may be, you know, jeopardize safety, but also infractions, door locks and things like that, outside entrances, lighting. Those types of things are also important. So at each team, again, as I said, there's training that goes on. The administrator then, once, if there's important information that needs to be shared from the crisis teams gets delivered out through faculty meeting or staff meetings to make sure that everybody's on the same page and is aware of what's going on. In the state of Vermont, administrators are required to do at least ten emergency drills. That used to be always fire drills. Now we can substitute crisis drills. And so those are often substituted within the drills as well for either lockdown, evacuation, secure the school, etc. So one of the things, and we're gonna talk more about this, this is a big part of the conversation tonight, is as a community member, what can you do? And again, the big part of that, I think, and you've heard this, I think, across the state, certainly across the country, is letting us know. I mean, if there are individuals that we have concerns about, you have concerns about, letting us know so that we can appropriately respond to that. Very, very important part of our work together. Obviously, when there is something that's going on, what can you do, you know? I think the first thing is, what we know is that moms and dads and guardians, which we love, love their children and wanna come. But that often is sometimes the worst situation because it further compounds the issues. So if there is something going on, we'd like you to watch for updates. We try to be diligent about that. Now, we can't often beat the social media, but what we try to do is ascertain the facts administratively, collect what we need to get out, and try to rapidly respond to that. So that's obviously a critical component. Obviously, our local media, in the past, we've had certain situations, and we typically will ask the media to go to a certain space or a certain location, and we will push, we'll say, we'll update you in fifteen minutes. That's an important component, and then that's obviously communicated out. Being patient, again, those first few minutes, as I said, we, if there is a crisis, we need the time to figure out and make sure we know what is exactly going on before we quickly respond. So again, being patient is important. Again, a lot of our students, particularly in the high school and in some of the middle school, have access to social media and through their phone system. Obviously, if there is something that you're wanting, you know, being short, but being aware that sometimes those things can, the distractions can cause sometimes a concern. So being short and concise with your message is important, and being cautious of some of those initial reports which might not necessarily be true. And again, I think, last but not least, if you see something, you need to let us know. Again, don't just be a silent bystander. If you see something that you believe is a concern, you need to let us know, and as soon as you do that, the better. So I'm gonna ask Rob to come on up. Rob Evans, again, he's the School Liaison Officer for the State of Vermont, and we're happy to have him here. So thanks, Rob.
Good evening, folks. Again, Rob Evans, and the School Safety Liaison Officer for the Agency of Education and Department of Public Safety. And I gotta tell you, when I see and hear from Dave and see the panel here and the things that this community has done and continues to do, I'm incredibly encouraged and optimistic that we're getting things right. When I hear about access control and visitor management systems and security cameras and a community that is dedicated and committed to putting School Resource Officers into schools, it shows me that the community caretaking approach works, and it's a school system in a district that gets it right. So I appreciate the opportunity to kinda wrap around and wrap up what the state as a whole has been trying to do and the resources that we have been trying to provide to schools across the state, both public, private, and independent schools, and a total of about four hundred and fifty schools statewide that we're trying to move forward and enhance the level of school crisis emergency preparedness efforts. I come to this conversation after not only serving twenty-three years with the Vermont State Police, where the last four and a half years, I was the Assistant Field Force Commander, and I ran all the special operations teams for the state. But I come to you as an employee of a professional services consulting firm that specializes in campus safety and security across the country. And we also run and provide the operational leadership for the National Center for Campus Public Safety. But probably most importantly, I come to this conversation as a parent. A parent of three kids that were in the Essex School community and in the Essex School system back in two thousand and six when that unfortunate set of circumstances took place at Essex Elementary School. So I'm passionate about the subject material, but I'm also sensitive that these are sometimes difficult and concerning conversations that we all need to continue to have. School safety planning is not something new in the state. It actually started back in nineteen ninety-nine when then-Chief Leo Nadeau from the Essex Police Department formed or assisted in forming and developing the Vermont School Crisis Planning Team, which in the Essex community was decentralized collaborators to talk about how do we move the school crisis planning process forward. And that formalized into the development of, again, the Vermont School Crisis Planning Team. Seeing the need to formalize that team after Leo's, Nadeau's leadership with that back in two thousand and sixteen, the Agency of Education and the Department of Public Safety formalized in agreement and developed the Vermont School Safety Center. The Vermont School Safety Center is a website and a team approach between the two state agencies to assist private, public, and independent schools with this important school safety work. We've done several things that I just wanted to highlight briefly about the initiatives that we have in place and hope to have in place for the future. We've provided incident command and behavioral threat assessment training to schools across the state, prioritizing the need to teach educators and school executive leadership teams how to collaborate with first response organizations when they respond to a school during an emergency, and also how to conduct a behavioral threat assessment, just like they did at Fairhaven, just like they were able to identify a threat before that threat got actioned, and just like they did in Fairhaven to mitigate what could have been a tragic set of circumstances. We've provided school safety planning, response plans, and templates. We've met with local, state, and federal partners to discuss and continue to provide and develop school best practices. We've met with local emergency management officials to educate and inform them on current and future school crisis planning initiatives. And we've hosted four governor's school safety conferences where we've highlighted a couple of things. One is the behavioral threat assessment, and the other is a community resiliency approach that folks can take after a school goes through a critical incident, similar to what South Burlington went through last year when they had those series of threats that took place in your school system. We've provided What If Wednesday training scenarios, where every other Wednesday, we provide a training scenario for school administrators to share with their school team and their faculty and staff that just walks through a little school safety scenario to educate and inform them about how to respond to a specific incident. We've provided over two hundred school safety site assessments across the state where we visited those individual schools and met with their school executive leadership teams to find out what they're doing, to identify operational strengths, and more importantly, where we can have some improvements in the things that they are doing. And following the tragic events of Parkland, in Parkland, the governor put an initiative together to put four million dollars of capital funding towards school safety infrastructure. That capital funding, we hope, will get approved later this week by the state legislature, and each school will be provided an opportunity to put in for approximately twenty-five thousand dollars worth of school safety infrastructure. And what I mean by that is that's security cameras and locking systems and public address systems and visitor management systems and panic alarms. Those types of things that a community can identify what pieces of equipment will help them enhance their safety protocols and safety initiatives. And finally, we hope to dedicate about a million dollars' worth of existing Homeland Security funding to assist schools across the state with crisis response planning, training, and exercising. So that's kind of a three hundred and sixty-degree, thirty thousand-foot view of what the state is doing, and I'll be here afterwards to answer questions if needed.
So next, we're gonna talk a little bit about school community. We're the student representatives, as we've mentioned. So we're gonna discuss some support systems that we have and some of the climate within the school. So some examples of support system that the school has that creates a welcoming school community. One of them is clubs. For example, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Club, the Student Diversity Union, are just two examples of great systems that make it inclusive for all students and create more of a community and a friendship within the school. We also have some supportive policies, you know, that are supportive of students when it comes to any kind of conflict that may happen within the school and are dealt with. Guidance counselors are also great resources for students to seek support, not only emotionally and personally, but also when it comes to school-related matters like schedules. So they're a great resource that a lot of us students rely on. Some other examples include-
Yeah, I mean, we just think it's really important to look at, I mean, all the stuff we're hearing about what the schools are doing, but it's really important to know, kind of from the student perspective, how we're really feeling and about all what's happening and how it's changing our lives in school. And so again, going off of what Alex said, we feel like, and we can talk more about the high school, but in general, about all the schools, we feel like there's a lot of great support systems in place, at least, that's the idea. I think of like teachers, there's certain teachers that I know are always gonna be there for students, even if they're your advisor or just your whatever teacher for class. There's always like that teacher that you feel like you can talk to, and I would hope that most students have that somebody, if it's not their guidance counselor. But as Alex also mentioned, there's a bunch of different clubs that we think about. I mean, how many times have we at board meetings talked about the Student Diversity Union and all the great work they're doing? So we hope that, at least from a student's side, that there's a bunch of clubs that will make students come in and feel safe and feel like they're welcome, regardless of what's happening around the world and what's going on.
And student council too, right?
Yeah, and so I was, also other clubs that we were thinking, not just like GSA or SDU, but even like Student Council, which I'm a part of, and some other people here are as well. I see the shirt down there, Seth. That's like just another group of where obviously the students are trying to listen. It's a different kind of perspective. It's more on trying to change the school through bills and all this. But that, just a bunch of different clubs that look at trying to improve the school and making everybody feel welcome. So, yeah, and then the other thing we also wanna talk about was, as the other presentations were mentioning, were the actual protocols that are happening and how that's actually affecting students. I talked about this in a little bit more of a passionate way because I'm a junior that has to walk all the way from the junior lot through the front door. So before, it used to just be, I could walk through the library door, I could walk through the side doors, anybody could open it. But as the year has progressed and has so many different types of things around the world have been happening and is so prevalent to our school now, now I'm slowly starting to feel, you know, we can't use those side doors anymore. The library's closed, and we have to walk all the way around. And so I at least feel, and hopefully all students do, is that these new policies aren't making us feel a lot more safe. Like when you're in the school, you see that new paint that's on, and you feel just like you're more in a enclosed space, like nothing should happen. And hopefully, like all these kinds of like new locking systems and all of us having to walk, even though it's frustrating having to walk all the way around the school, hopefully that's all leading up for us to feel a lot more, a lot more safe in our school.
Yeah, as Arnell said, I was gonna talk a little bit about students feeling the effects of what has been implemented, but I think that was covered pretty well by Mr. Young. But yeah, I kind of second what Arnell said. It does make students feel more secure. And I think that's the purpose of all these protocols and all these new equipments, that students can feel safe and secure in their environment and don't have to be thinking about anything else but their schoolwork and their friends and their school community. Lastly, there are a lot of community-building events that the school hosts to try to build school spirit and support among students. For example, we have pep rallies where the entire school comes together and plays games and rallies and, you know, celebrates school spirit. We have Talent Night, which is an event that is hosted by the Key Club at our school, where each grade must create their own show, play, like I don't know what word exactly to use, but utilizing as many students within their grade as possible to create this fun and engaging event that I know the entire school participates in. Would you like to talk about some more examples?
Yeah, so like, again, Alex and I, when we think about this topic, obviously, there's the one side of it where it's about safety and literally feeling threatened and that kind of stuff, and what's been covered so far about all the new protocols. But the other, the other side about it, which is really important, is students actually feeling welcome and safe in the school, not just from being afraid that somebody's gonna walk into the school with a gun or whatever, but actually feeling welcome and like they are, like they're, like they are meant to be there and whatnot. So that's why Alex and I are mentioning these different types of activities. I think our schools do a really good job at having a bunch of different activities like Talent Night and other stuff that are super engaging for everybody, and that makes students feel like they belong, and they should. And I think all these things together, our school is moving in a really positive direction, at least for students, to make us feel a lot more safe and welcome. So I think that's pretty much up. That wraps up our presentation. I think we'll move on now into the small table discussions, and basically- Yeah, if you have a quick question. Before the small-
David, do you wanna do, take a few questions, ma'am?
Sure.
Well, I kinda wanna understand the relationship between School Resource Officers, the counselors, the rental health professionals on the staff, because I'm trying to figure out if people are communicating with each other and whether or not issues like HIPAA come into play, other privacy concerns. Because I'm kinda curious, like, okay, let's say there's a teacher that becomes aware that a student is acting out or writing things on a textbook or a blog or wherever, and the counselor is aware of that. And I think about the Parkland situation, where everybody knew this person was a time bomb, and yet it still happened. Because, I mean, we can armor all we want, but if the student locks up to the door and if he's reasonably concealed, like, oh, it's the student, and we let him in, and nothing really changed. So I'm really curious about wanting to know that there's, so you have the ability to remove or address the threat even before it gets to the planning stage, where you have the ability to remove students from school.
Well, we all have the ability to recognize issues, and that's really, I think, fundamentally, as a community, we wanna try to help everybody out to ensure that people are in good places. When they come into our school, the school, our staff, our teachers, our administrators have an obligation. When we have, when we're made aware of a situation, we work closely with our School Resource Officers. If there is something that's specific to, you know, their personal matters, but it trumps into concerns relative to, you know, law enforcement, then obviously, law enforcement takes over. If it's something that stays parked in our area, our School Resource Officers will be made aware, but they're also informed and also trained as School Resource Officers that that's private and can't be shared. So specifically around, it could be a health condition, it could be a variety of things, right, that might be indicating that. So again, there's a, there is a line there, but bottom line, if there's any, if it's enough information that concerns around a threat, then our School Resource Officers and the Police Department are, take the lead role.
I think I can speak on that as well from actively working in the schools. So we definitely do have a relationship with our guidance counselors, our school-based social workers, our prevention counselors. So it kinda works two ways too, right? Sometimes the school are the first people to get concerning information, things regarding students or community members. And sometimes the Police Department is the first to receive that kind of information. With our relationship with the school and those people, we kinda operate, we do operate on best interests of the students. So if it's something that comes to the level of a safety concern or a service need that a school counselor could provide, we're gonna communicate that. I can just speak firsthand. Any given week, I'm talking to guidance counselors, school-based social workers, multiple times a day usually.
Patrick, did you wanna?
Yeah, I don't mind just, the only other thing that I would add, I'm Patrick Burke on Fifth Foot High School. The only other thing I would add, and to just put a finer point on the whole HIPAA concerns around, nobody in any of our positions is sitting on information because of confidentiality if that information has the potential to, the individual to cause harm to themselves or others. And so there's a hip on exception there, and all of our employees, teachers, and guidance counselors are trained as such. And so, for example, let's say a student hands in a piece of writing in an English class, and the teacher's kinda like, I don't know, like, is this like a violent video game script? Or is this some kind of concerning activity on the part of the student? We don't leave it up to the teacher to make that determination. The teacher then will push that change to the school counselor. And then we don't often, we won't leave it up to the school counselor either. And we can communicate work with the family, and I'll bring in how we moved in the PD in a second. But with that work with the family, that student will be out of school until a risk assessment is completed by a certified mental health professional outside the school system. We get that risk assessment back prior to the student returning, and, or as a condition of the student returning, I should say, because there is occasion where the student does not return, and that is because they need a therapeutic environment, which the school's not. It's not a therapeutic environment, and the student may need some support in, by way of residential treatment or outplacement, and their education services may happen somewhere else as well. So I don't wanna say that's common, but we, you know, a lot of the work that came, that's come post-Columbine with this whole notion of risk assessments, and our school's authority to keep students out of the school building when we have concerns about that, has been really effective for us. And so then, the last thing I would say is throughout that whole process that PDs lived in, because oftentimes, someone, the police can have conversations with the family about availability of weapons or what's going on in the house, etc., and so that's a really helpful. And they have the training to, you know, talk about that, and they're more, they have more expertise in terms of like gun safety and all those kinds of things, which my school counselors and myself don't have. So, and the last thing I would say is really a great asset, Kevin, you know, because it is really true that sometimes it comes to PD and then to us, and sometimes it comes from us to PD, but the energy that we've had in terms of working with South Burlington Police, mostly by way of the School Resource Officers, has been great. The students had a forum on Monday where it was mostly about legislation related to to common sense gun legislation or the Second Amendment. But a lot of the students talked about South Burlington Police and mentioned Kevin Guerillas by name. So it's very clear that his role and time to show before him in our schools is really important.
Thank you, Patrick. The only, last thing I would say, and we wanna move on pretty quickly. You'll hear one thing, and I think it resonates for us. We've gotten much, much better, but when we talk about response, we talk about situational awareness and situational response. There's no one situation that will ever be the same. And when you hear from the state side of things, it's always looking at, you know, understanding the situation, being aware of the situation, and being able to respond appropriately. Again, a really important concept for us to make sure we're there. We had one, we'll take one other question before I turn it back over to the students to start us in the small table group conversation. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I just wanted to ask about the state law that's been passed where I don't-
Hang on just a second.
Well, okay. I don't, I, I don't recall the exact details, but, but the state law whereby I believe you can or the, um, the police have the authority to confiscate the weapons of an individual who has been identified by, by, I guess, family members or people who are in contact with that person as being potentially attacked? I don't know exactly how the law works or how it's going to work, but I'm wondering whether there would be any possible relevance for a situation, in the case of a student or a former student or a recently former student, as in the case of Parkland, who, um, is presenting concerning behavior that a lot of people know is concerning, they haven't been convicted of a crime, but I believe that the state law would give police the authority to confiscate the weapons. I don't know exactly how it works, but I think, I feel like that's a very, very, very important component of prevention. And, and I'm wondering if that's something that you consider, how it, my appliance, how it runs and how this goes.
Anyone wish to respond?
I think we, we did see, um, with a lot of support from our folks in legislature, I don't think this is on, but, um, we, we saw a couple, uh, bills passed that gives additional tools to law enforcement as far as confiscation of weapons. One is an extreme risk protection order where a court can order that an individual relinquish their, their firearms. Uh, there's another, I, I think we're hearing it called across the country, kind of a, a red flag law, where if we're, if we're engaging with someone at their home and we believe that there's a high propensity for violence and we know that there's weapons in the house, then there are times, um, and I don't, the, the effective date has not come yet. This is not in effect yet, but it's been passed so that we can prepare for it. But it does involve a, a bit of another tool. One thing, and I'm gonna steal two minutes, give me a microphone and look out, but, um, I, I do wanna go down to kind of how we do business and how we do business around that. And, um, first and foremost, absolutely steal the floor, and we, we have taxpayers here. We have people who, when I bring a budget forward to the city manager, he brings it forward to the council, it comes to you, the citizens. We've included in that budget for, since my entire time here in South Burlington, which will be almost 12 years now, four school resource officers. That's, we, we only have 44 officers, so that's almost 10% of our department. Uh, this community continues to support that wholeheartedly. When we talk about budget reductions, we talk about, uh, reducing tax rate, and we start talking about school resource officers, what we continually hear is absolutely not. I won't, I won't repeat in public what we hear, but, uh, it is clear that these are valued positions, that the community supports them with your tax dollar. Um, and because they bring value, uh, these positions started long before my arrival, long before Kevin's. Uh, I was working in Berry in 1986 and used the model here in South Burlington to start our school resource program in Berry. So we've had school resource officers here since forever. Um, and what that does is that Kevin Grellis is assigned to the school system 40 hours a week. I don't get to see him. Uh, I haven't seen him, well, except for our social event on Sunday night, I don't ever see Kevin because he's here. Uh, he's in this school, he's embedded in the school, he knows the kids, he knows the teachers, he knows the counselors. As a matter of fact, when we did have that threatening event last year, when the facts came out, as we started to investigate that, Kevin said, gee, that sounds like, and provided the student's name, that ultimately was the student responsible. Without really knowing anything about it, just because he knew the pulse of this school community, he knew the students in this school community, he knew who it was. We had to work to prove it, but his got his inner instinct because of his knowledge and comfort in this building, excuse me, the building across the parking lot, um, you know, that's the value we get from this. And as far as secrets and confidentiality, because of our relationship, there is not inappropriate information shared. But if there's a need to know, somebody gets that information. And when we do have a threat or a concern, whether there's a law that allows us to do it or not, uh, we send one of our school resource officers to the home and they find a way to make sure that people are safe. Whether it be the gift of gab, whether it be begging, pleading, uh, we search homes, we search students' rooms. Uh, we find a way to convince parents to do the right thing. Uh, because we wanna make sure that our kids are as safe and our community is as safe as we can make it.
Thank you, Trevor. We're gonna transition now, uh, to the small table groups. I'm gonna ask, uh, Arnel and Alex to come up and introduce this, uh, small table group activity.
Right, so I think this is the most, um, influential part of the co- conversation tonight. So, this is where we'll kinda get into groups and discuss some of these questions. This is also where we have some student volunteers, which can help facilitate this conversation. So hopefully we can all kind of, people that are sitting alone or with some few other peoples, kinda make the tables with a little more people, maybe five, six people at a table. And then also I'd ask the student volunteers to kinda space themselves out and sit down, um, and you guys can take a few notes on the big piece of paper that has some guiding questions. But also for everybody, um, there are sticky notes and we welcome anybody to write down their own thoughts or questions or whatever, and at the end we'll all collect those and we'll have those for feedback. But basically, I don't know how long we wanna run this, maybe 20 minutes or so, we can see how it's going. Um, and just have a small group discussion, which will lead to a bu- a lot more questions to the panel. So, again, anybody, feel free to just kind of mix together and make the tables a little bit.
Yeah, just feel free to move forward and make, fill up the entire tables. Um, if there isn't a student volunteer at your table, please assign someone to take notes and to be the designated note taker. Uh, and then, yeah. Perfect. And we'll go sit down. All right, so once we're done with our conversations, we're gonna round to each table and we'd like you to pose one of the questions that was discussed during the conversation. Um, if we have enough time, we'll go around and ask a second question. All right, start over there. Uh, but I think we're. If the panelists.
Sure. I'll do it.
If any panelists that are interested in coming back up, please feel free to do so. Um, is there a table that would like to start by posing a question that they discussed?
All right, and it also doesn't necessarily have to be a question, it could also be a thought or a highlight of the duck conversation.
Just make sure it's on, Arnel.
Alex?
Yeah. My, my question would be, uh, are you planning to, uh, uh, how to say, like, relocate all their, all the windows and everything into bulletproof form? So, change it, especially the entrance to the classes, you know, the doors to the classes? There's a little, um, what do you call it? A little, uh, part made of glass, so change it into bulletproof for more safety?
I'll respond. That's not, that's not our plan, um, at the present time. We have five schools, our interior doors, that's not a plan. We're not, we're not planning on doing that at this time.
Another question, also being mindful of time, this was scheduled until 8:00 PM, so if anyone needs to leave, we're aware and feel free to do so. Um, but we're gonna grab a couple more questions and try to get those answered. Uh, yeah, Amelia?
How does the school district as a whole reach out to the kids who have fallen through the cracks?
I guess it's looking over here at me, isn't it? Well, I think, um, great question. As administrators, teachers and staff and fellow students, we think that that's a big part of what we try to do in our, in our district, and that is to establish, um, strong relationships with each other. Um, so if I'm a classroom, uh, teacher, I might be the most, um, approachable for that particular student, but I might have a great relationship with, um, several of my staff members. And that's what we think is really critically important around making sure, uh, that kids don't fall through the cracks. And I think as a school district, you know, we have a lot of, um, our students, I think, would be just as happy to walk into Mr. Burke's office or, or a nurse's office and say, can I ask you a question? And, um, again, I think that's, that's the critical component to not make, to making sure kids don't fall through the cracks.
Oh, yeah. Um, so the question also discussed, you know, I was at that table group and we talked about how sometimes, um, the issue is a lot of these resources are there and can be accessed by students, but sometimes a student is in such a mental space where they don't go out and access it themselves. Um, so one of the examples that we talked about was a program called Peer Leadership, where, um, seniors within the school system, you know, uh, communicate and partner with freshmen and other students and give guidance and really make an effort to, uh, communicate and connect with every student, um, no matter how they're feeling or appearing, to try to create that sense of community and, um, making sure that everyone feels involved and safe and supported. More questions from tables?
We discussed, uh, the balance between school safety and climate, and I'm gonna try to roll a couple of our comments in here. And that have included, um, as we harden our schools, make them have less points of entry and things, what are we doing to make the insides more inclusive and more open and inviting so that when people are in there, it's, uh, more pleasant to be around? And some of the kinda ideas we also have about that is, are we planning on having people, I think, maybe staff, more visible at crucial times so that students get that feeling? And then how does all that work, uh, fit in, doing my best here, with our academic mission? And how do we make sure that as we move to a better, safe environment, we're not doing that at the cost of our academic and social goals for our school?
Thanks, Noah. No, I think, I think it's a, it's, um, it's a really, I mean, it's a good question. Um, and we struggled in my table group with the same. I mean, how do we create an environment that's both welcoming and exciting to learn in, but also, you know, has the right measures of safety? So currently, as you know, um, in the district, we're going through what we call master planning and visioning process. Uh, actually, a lot of you in this room have been involved in that, all the way back to 2004, 2008, 2015. So that question, actually, we've taken a look at kind of the structural functions of the school, and now we're taking a, a further look around, kinda what is, what is the environment that we're trying to make sure we, uh, have that supports instruction, right? And that's currently gonna happen, um, in the high school and the middle school this coming year. And I think that will be a really critical component for us to be paying attention to. Certainly, most importantly, from an educational delivery perspective, but seconded by ensuring that we have the right kind of protocols, measures, access points, et cetera, um, that can happen. And not, and that's not, um, we're not excluding, obviously that's a big part of our elementary, uh, you know, decisions as well at the three elementary schools. So, w- we, we know that there's, there's work and we currently have master planning and visioning. And that's one of the components within it, is safety and security, um, as well as our delivery of educational services.
On the, on the number ten topic of, uh, the safety of the physical environment, exclusive of the idea of bulletproof glass or anything, actually bulletproof, we talked about, um, how, um, we feel that the district is doing a really great job in general of being inclusive, of supporting students, um, and also of training students in the drills. But we talked about how effective the drill measures would actually be in the event of a real live shooter situation. And it was wonderful to have an officer at our table, um, discussing with us, um, measures of increasing effectiveness, um, of these kinds of, um, drill measures that you would actually take in a live shooter situation. So one of the things that he informed us of that I had never really thought of and that I think is not a part of the drills at present, is increasing the physical barriers to entry in every room. Um, exclusive of the idea of changing materials, but he said if you had a physical barrier that you could place, for example, in front of the door, something that simple, you lock the door and then you place, then you have additional physical barriers. Doesn't have to be enough to stop a person with a semi-automatic weapon for 10 minutes, but maybe all it would take would be a couple extra seconds and that person would move on and the safety of the people in that room would be enhanced. So these are measures that I think that resource officers and other members of the police department could maybe be very helpful in enhancing the value of the drills, to include some of these other measures that could be taken that aren't being taken at present if there were an actual active shooter situation, which hasn't happened at this point, hopefully not.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be hogging the mic here, but I, I think your points are, are well taken. Um, our buildings, um, currently, you know, they were built, you know, 50, 55, 60 years ago. They were built in a much different, um, mindset, um, education delivery and safety. And again, as I said earlier around master planning and visioning, that's one of the things that we're currently doing. We, we never had, you know, key scan, which is our swiping in to get in. Um, our staff before didn't have ID badges on them, which they all do now. Um, and so we've, we've continued to take on measures, including we'll be looking at kind of secondary entrance. And the high school has some secondary entrance point that we're soon to put into play, where you can get into the first set of doors, but you can't get into the second set of doors. So we're working on what we would say, these secondary entrance points. Uh, in addition, as you heard, those intruder lock sets and things of that nature, we've also added, which we didn't have those either. Our doors were always open, only when at the end of the day, if the teacher, when the teacher or staff member left, they locked them. Um, and now that's a much different mindset. So, we're, we're continuing to work on that, but I would say that's a big part of our kinda long-term plan around how we can continue to evolve.
Yeah, also kinda to that point, when we were in a meeting organizing this, um, we were also talking about that a lot. And I think Bridget brought up a point, I think she has some family in Chicago or somewhere in that area. She was talking about how that school system is so much more different. They have like metal detectors and during lunch, they have to be moved off and this and that kind of stuff. And I think our conversation kinda centered around that day was, what is kind of too much? What makes students feel like it's not just a school, it's kind of like a prison or something like that? And I just think like, to that point, I think our school is trying to kind of have more barriers that do prevent it. But I think, at least from that conversation we had, I feel like at some point it just gets to a point where it's not even like a school setting anymore, but, um, but that's just kind of what we were talking about, how, how in other schools and other areas that is happening. And there are a bunch more, you know, as you said, barriers and stuff, um, so I think that's a really interesting point.
All right, so we wanna be mindful of time, um, so we're gonna wrap it up. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming and attending this wonderful event. Um, we're going to be collecting, uh, the papers at the tables and collecting your feedback. We also have your contact information and we'll be sending out next steps. Uh, if we would ask the panelists if they would feel like to stay a little bit longer and if community members have any questions for any of the panelists, feel free to ask them, I would say, if you feel comfortable with that. And yeah, thank you so much for coming, everybody.